I'm going for handsome again.
All right. I don't think we have any attendees, so I think Zoom has caught up to us. Calling to order the special workshop of Tuesday, May 10th. Can I get a roll call?
Yes, Student Trustee Dana.
Here.
Student Trustee Lyra. Don't see them. Okay, Trustee Boyd.
Here.
Trustee Davidson.
Here.
Trustee Dos.
On his way. Just, he had it 4:45 on his calendar. So he, from Julie, so anyway, he's coming on now.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Daram.
Here.
President Hinckley.
Yeah.
And Superintendent Wells.
Here.
Great. Can we have our mission and vision statement and meeting norms read? Maybe Trustee Dana, you can start. And then I can read the meeting norms.
All right. The mission and vision statement of A S D. Okay, so the mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. A S D is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Thank you. Our meeting norms are, one, to maintain a focus on what is best for our students. Two, ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully. Three, endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs and what is best for students. Four, make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their own points of view, even if one disagrees. And our last action we need to take tonight is to approve our agenda, which is one review and discussion item, the 2022 says for the middle school and the high school. So I'll take a motion to approve our
Move that we approve our agenda for this work-study session. A second.
Student Trustee Dana.
Yes.
Trustee, Student Trustee Lyra. Okay. Trustee Davidson.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Vice President Daram.
Yes.
President Hinckley.
Yeah.
And Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. The agenda is passed unanimously, and I actually misspoke. We have three school plans for student achievement, not two. We have Albany Middle School, Albany High School, and McGregor. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Wells.
I'm great. I'm excited tonight. We get to present our annual school plans for student achievement. So tonight, we have before you, as mentioned previously, our secondary plans. We will have AMS and our Albany High School along with McGregor Alternative Continuation School presented tonight. First up would be AMS by our principal, short timer Deb Brill. And we get to look at a lot of data, at least some data, and how we respond to that data as we engage in what we call a cycle of continuous improvement. And this is good and exciting work as we begin to grapple with data and let data guide our footsteps in doing what is best for each and every kid in our district. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Shin.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Good afternoon. While I wait for the slide presentation to come up, good afternoon, Dr. Wells. Good afternoon, Board Trustees. Good afternoon, Albany community. Thank you so much for being here for this special workshop today. We are here this afternoon to learn about the newly developed 2022-23 School Plan for Student Achievement for Albany Middle School, Albany High School, and McGregor High School from Principal Brill and Principal McNally. They will present their school plans, and after their entire presentation, we will engage in a Q and A session. Next slide, please. But before I hand it over to our fabulous principals, I will briefly review the purpose and goal of the School Plan for Student Achievement, as well as the process for the development of the School Plan for Student Achievement, otherwise known as the SIPSA. Then our site leaders will present their components of their plans, which include the school vision and mission, school population, the SIPSA goals, and for each of their goals, they will share the identified needs, annual measurable outcomes, analysis of successes, challenges, and changes, and plan strategies and activities to support those goals. And lastly, they will conclude with their next steps in this continuous cycle of improvement. Next slide, please. The School Plan for Student Achievement is the school-level strategic plan that is aligned to the district-level strategic plan known as the LCAP, Local Control Accountability Plan. And for high schools, the SIPSA is also aligned to the WASP Plan, which is developed for high school accreditation purposes. The purpose of the SIPSA is to coordinate the actions, services, strategies, and activities of the school site personnel to improve student achievement and other measurable outcomes. The goal of the SIPSA is to direct resources where they will most effectively improve student academic achievement and outcomes by implementing research-based strategies and interventions for all and subgroups of students as informed by the data. Next slide, please. The development of the SIPSA is a collaborative process that involves the educational partners of the entire school community. And in this collaborative process, the school staff have the most critical role. The staff is responsible for administering assessments and analyzing student data. As a result of that analysis, they develop and implement strategies and activities to respond to that data. After the implementation, they monitor the effectiveness of the strategies and activities to make adjustments as needed. And they are constantly working within the cycle of continuous improvement to review data, reflect on their practices, to make decisions to refine or to revise, or to redo, or to redirect strategies and resources to meet the needs of all of their students. The school site council also has an integral role in this process. This team monitors the implementation of the plan, provides input for the recommendation of the strategies and activities. They also evaluate the effectiveness of the planned activities and give the site approval of the plan before recommending it for board approval. And today, the site council-approved plans are being brought to us for discussion before the final step of the board approval. And now I hand it off to Principal Brill to share the AMS plan with us.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Assistant Superintendent Shin, and nice to see everybody here today and to have this opportunity. I always appreciate this time with the SIPSA where we're able to share some of the reflections and thinking from the year and really put that intention towards what would best serve our students in the year to come. As I know our staff works really hard to want to be continually, you know, improving on our practices. I also really value just the role of a school site council that brings parents, guardians, teachers, and staff together. I think that's a really important conversation. I think similarly, in the past, this meeting with the board has felt similarly where we have a chance to really jump into it and discuss all the different pieces. So I'm going to start going through these slides. So the AMS vision, Albany Middle School is a school community dedicated to learning. The mission of providing a rich and rigorous standards-based curriculum is guided by our vision statement in a safe and engaging environment. Each member of the AMS community strives towards excellence, acceptance of differences, exploration of ideas, and responsibility to a larger world. At AMS, everybody teaches and everybody learns. When we look at our school population, the, what's most noticeable in terms of the the changes, just to call out from over time, is just the declining enrollment that mirrors kind of national trends. We have about 60 less students than we did three years ago, and predict the fifth grade enrollment will bring us to nine sections per, per grade level. I know there's also efforts to shift some of those trends, but that's currently what's most notable in terms of our population. So the way that our SIPSA is designed, it's built around three goals that, that are mirrored with LCAP goals, but our three goals relate to the first ones related to academic achievement. The second goal relates looking more at the whole child, which we know is essential, not only because we care about our students, but also because that part can't be ignored if we want to improve academic outcomes. And our third goal is going to relate to the professional development that is in place in order to support the success of these goals. Our identified need, our students in achievement-opportunity gap populations have academic outcomes that are below our school, average school average outcomes, and our goals, while wanting to address, of course, achievement and excellence for all of our students, need to pay particular attention to those groups and have particular strategies in place to support those students. Data was an interesting piece to pull this year. You know, as you know, our CASP data is somewhat old, and then our FastBridge data, I think, is going to become really useful. When we looked at the, the comparisons from the year before, they were taking the FastBridge at home, and the data looked very different than when they were taking it at school, which makes sense. And so we're really seeing the data this year as serving as really strong baseline data. And we'll get a little bit more into this in the plan. I think, looking at that data, what we'll be able to do in the, in the coming year is to be able to provide teachers with class lists of the, each of the, each of the formative assessments to be able to then respond within each piece. So this is, was a really important year for us using the FastBridge. And in terms of the, what, what was elevated for us is a need to continue focus on our Hispanic Latinx students, our Black African-American students. We found that the socio-economically disadvantaged students were below the overall school outcomes, but not by as much. And and we found those trends to, to be across all of the, the different, the different pieces. And so the goals that we set as a school site council were to continue to increase these, the data for all of our populations, but to increase by larger percentages for the populations that were below the, the average school. And when we were looking at analysis, what we, we talked a lot about was using the data to, we have a lot of targeted interventions in place. Our teachers have a formative assessments that we've had in place for a number of years that they're always changing and growing with, that are within each subject area. So monthly, our teachers are, are doing formative assessments, if not more often, but common ones. And the FastBridge provides a nice normed one that we can use. And, and so that, the idea is that we're using those and tying those to targeted interventions. We discuss data at our student services meetings. We discuss data at our leadership meetings. We discuss data at our staff meetings. And the FastBridge is going to be a wonderful additional layer to this. We, one of the other pieces that was a very strong part of our school goal that we had tried to carry over was our Cobra tutoring program. A lot of work was put into trying to hire someone for this position. I had a number of meetings with people at UC Berkeley, and yeah, I won't get into all the details, but it was very challenging, even though we had a number of people trying to help us with that. Next year, our PTA has budgeted additional funds for that position so that we can offer more money and put that, hopefully put that program back in place. And so, and then we'll also have our clean FastBridge data, since we have a year of administering it in person. I'm, in terms of our strategies and goals, I'm going to kind of go through and highlight some pieces for you, just because reading all of them, I think, is maybe more than what's necessary. You have the plans, but I want to make sure to highlight the important pieces as we go through it. One is just what we were talking about of the piece of examining data, reviewing and analyzing data, and you know, we have weekly student services meetings where counselors are monitoring students, particularly those in achievement-opportunity gap populations, and looking at what services are they being offered? Are we seeing growth in those areas? Do they have intervention classes? Have we had a conference? And so we're just continually talking about these students and looking at what more or different needs to happen to support them. And I think the parent-teacher counselor conferences for ASKR students, we've really shifted how we do that to be more data-informed. And so that we come up with action steps out of those. We have, how are we going to measure the impact of those conferences? And then we loop, the counselors have a process of looping back with those and then reaching back out to the team with, this is working, this isn't working, let's try this, which feels like a really positive use of conference time. We have supplemental math intervention classes, as well as reading. We now have a Cobra Study Six, as well as Seven and Eight for students who struggle with work or homework completion. We were also looking at trying to push some tutoring into, into those, into that period for students who need some targeted intervention. There is a wonderful district initiative around UDL, and later on, we talk about MTSS. And so that's a piece, there's already a lot of work, we did a lot of work as a leadership team this year of taking the work we already did and kind of framing it into MTSS tiers, as well as looking at it from, through a UDL lens, but that's work that's going to really grow in the next year. And the student services team was what I was just discussing. I think what I would highlight on here, we have a very strong English language development program. We can tell that it's strong because students move up through the levels and, and graduate out of that program. And we, what we had put in place the year after Common Core Math began, so what we had found was that our ELD students, who normally were doing fine in math, but struggled more, needed more support in like history and more language embedded courses, when we switched to Common Core, really struggled with the math piece because it's so language immersed now. So we have an additional class that's been in place for a few years. That's a supplemental class to support students developing, ELD students, beginning ELD students, developing their math language skills. And we have, we have the, sorry. We have the tutoring program that we're putting back in place, ELA intervention, our Writers Coach Program, which is a really wonderful program to support all of our different students, and particularly those who don't have that extra support at home. Our teacher librarian and library tech do a lot of work, again, filling in a lot of gaps for students who need a space to work before and after school, who need support with, connecting with books and literacy and love of learning, as well as helping them with research skills. We do a lot of work now that students, especially now that students all have one-to-one, really making sure that they have the skills, everything from keyboarding to Google Suites, to really understanding how to determine if sources online are credible or not credible, which is really important. And, and then at the end, we're talking about the MTSS, which is, you know, what I was discussing earlier. When we look at goal two, we will provide a safe and engaging environment in which each member of the AMS community strives towards excellence, acceptance of differences, exploration of ideas, and responsibility to a larger world. It's essential that students feel safe and highly connected at school. Not all of our students are reporting that based on the California Healthy Kids Survey. And so we were on a really nice cycle with that survey where we would get it. There's, there's a two-year gap, and the two-year gap is very intentional in order to be able to provide time in between to really shift school climate, which is not quick work. And so developing goals, monitoring those goals, and then, and then seeing where we are two, two years down the road. You know, with our time at home with COVID, obviously that really shifts school climate when you're not at school. So the results from this year will be very informative with planning for the following year. And so this is the data that we had. The California Healthy Kids Survey, 65% of students, this was from 19, 2019, 2020, reported feeling safe or very safe at school. 28% reported neither. So we're looking to increase that outcome. As presented at a previous board meeting, our suspension rate, which is another measure in this area, are down as of when we measured in February 2022, they were at seven suspensions down from 37 the prior year. And we, with two or more races, it's zero down from 12. African-American was at one, down from eight, and Latinx at three, down from four. And so that's data we'd like to see that trend, to maintaining that trend and decreasing the suspension rate. And so we have comprehensive approach to how we support students. There's a lot of layers of work at the school for looking at school connectedness, as well as social-emotional learning. And there's a lot of different creative ways to address that goal. The one new piece we added this year was our peer resort of justice program. And we're really interested in measuring the impact of that. So, and that's, students are, peers are pushing into advisory classes and leading community-building circles on a monthly basis. We also just started our PR RJ Tier Two program, as we've been working with students to help resolve student conflicts, and they prep students, they design the circle, they facilitate the circle, all with adult support, and that on a very small sample size has been very successful, and the students who participated report feeling more connected and safer because of it. When we look at our strategies and activities that support goal two, again, I'm going to highlight so I don't take up all the airspace. We have a wide range of school-wide lessons involved that we push in through advisory, related to school climate, bullying prevention, diversity awareness, anti-racism, and digital citizenship. We have lessons on cigarette use, vaping, and it's, the program's expanding to marijuana use. We have a great deal of counseling mental health support. We're going to be increasing next year to have an additional intern on sites. We'll have a whole extra case load that we can support students through mental health. We continue to run the Safe School Ambassadors, and we teach strategies through advisory. We are a PBIS school that uses a lot of positive behavioral support, such as Cobra Cachas, Cobra of the Month, Positive Postcards, and lots of individual classroom activities. Our behavior matrix, I think, is leading edge in terms of really fully embodying and embracing restorative practices and shifting behavior, but still holding accountability in a more meaningful way. And with a lot of different targeted supports in place. Also, in terms of mental health, we have targeted supports and interventions, such as we have a large increase of students coming off of the pandemic with anxiety-related issues. And so we've had, we've been running groups on anxiety to support students needing that. Our PR RJ program I just spoke about, we have been and will plan to continue running affinity groups for African-American students, as well as one for our Latinx students. We, well, the one thing that we talked about for next year is really making sure that there, that our students who are in achievement gap populations and are also struggling academically have a point person at school who is intentionally like being their point of connectedness. That doesn't mean that other people aren't, of course, also. But one particular point person, we've done this in the past, so we talked in the school site council about bringing that back. And we have a strong leadership program. Noontime activities is important. Lunchtime is where kids really need to feel socially connected. So we have clubs, we have noontime activities, and a number of different pieces to help students with that piece. Unity Week also brings together this idea of celebrating differences, but also being one as a community. Our student success space is incredibly helpful in terms of students having a place where they can get the extra individual attention that they need. And we also put in a program where, that we're going to continue for next year, where eighth-grade aides are mentors in our sixth-grade reading and math support classes, and that's something that our students report finding very useful and meaningful, and the teachers do as well. And then we will continue to provide comprehensive sexual education. We had talked about in our school site council, just the importance of calling out, making sure that counselors and administrators and teachers are being proactive and reaching out to parents and guardians when there's significant social-emotional concerns. This is also in our other goal, under academic concerns. And digital citizenship is a really big piece. A lot of the conflict and stress that happens with students socially at school is a result of outside-of-school social media use. And so it's really important that we're actively working to address that with our students and educate. And then, in the same way that we talked about using MTSS in terms of continually evaluating and building that within academics, that should be happening in the area of social-emotional learning as well, and social-emotional wellness. And then we also wanted to just add and increase focus on teacher wellness. We know that working in schools right now is challenging, and supporting our teachers intentionally does wonderful things for our students as well. Our final goal, professional development and collaboration time will be structured to support teachers in all areas that support our student outcomes. There will be clear communication throughout levels of our school to work towards meeting our goals. So if we want to be successful in Goals One and Two, how are we providing resources and time to our staff in order to be able to meet those goals in One and Two? So that's just what this says. So I'm going to move on. And really, we had a whole conversation about how do we measure this? And we've talked about like, oh, we do surveys at the end of PD. How did, do you feel like you learned something, all of that? But really, what we want is to be increasing our student outcomes in Goals One and Two. And if our PD is successful, then that's what we're doing. So that's what we wanted to focus our evaluation efforts on. So we also are excited that our district is going to have a Director of Professional Development. So that will be able to just not only focus on some of these site-specific needs, but also some of these district goals, and really provide amazing targeted professional development. And parts I have already said. So in terms of strategies, we have a strong leadership team at our school, that we have meetings with the principal every other week to plan professional development for the year. We're working with the district to provide professional development on MTSS. We've been, teachers have been really welcoming, learning more about using restorative practices in their classrooms, and we've done a lot of pushing in of running circles in classrooms when there's been challenges, and that's had a really positive impact. And we are looking forward to the district's professional development lead working with the staff more on universal design for learning, and it will have our first workshop on that in June, and this will then, of course, carry on to next year. And professional learning community opportunities will be provided to staff. It's really essential that there is targeted time where we give staff, here's our FastBridge data, meet with your departments, talk about the students, and really look at like, what are the targeted interventions? And we've had a lot of success with teachers saying like, oh, wow, I'm noticing like your class, you know, had much stronger outcomes in general on this particular piece. How did you teach that? Or I have a group of students who didn't get this. Is there another way that I could teach it to them? Or let's trade students for this one period so that I can focus on the students who need a little extra, you can do a little enrichment. So those professional learning communities, a lot can come out of those. Professional development topics related to equity, cultural competency, providing opportunities for self-reflection engagement, as well as preparation to respond to situations that arise in facilitated conversations. That is something that needs to always stay part of our professional development. That's something that you never get done with, and it's really important that that is in place. Our weekly staff newsletter, I think, is important to note because not only does it keep staff informed of the school-wide information, but it also maximizes staff meeting time. We're not spending time at staff meetings listing off, you know, gen, you know, list of things that people need to know. We're using the time to really engage deeply on student outcomes. Our staff will continue working on developing professional knowledge of restorative justice and our school-related practices. And there'll be intentional staff time provided to collaborate on supporting students who struggle academically and socially emotionally, with particular focus on students in, in achievement-opportunity gaps. We have daily announcements. Parent guardians need to have an opportunity to have facilitated conversations about school-wide issues and supporting students from a parenting perspective. We kind of like to talk about as bookends, our school, the parent, students in the middle, like, how do we keep them supported on both sides? And parent guardians will be provided parenting education on middle school-related topics. So that brings us to our next steps. The whole plan is our next step. So this is going to just highlight for you a continued focus on achievement-opportunity gap populations in all discussions and areas of focus that needs to be number one on the list, and that's the lens for all of the pieces we talk about. Re-implementing Cobra tutoring is a, is a high-leverage item. That's very important. Looking at the 2021-22 California Healthy Kids Survey and developing goals and action steps. And we've talked a great deal in our school site council, as well as our leadership team, about putting another social-emotional learning indicator in place. The California Healthy Kids Survey is wonderful with the, you know, every other year nationally normed or state-normed. But what we need is also something that we can, that could be more formative, so we're not waiting two years to get data about social-emotional learning in our students. Professional development and, for the school, for MTSS and UDL. Continued work on culture-responsive practices, growing our peer circle up, that's our PR RJ program, and providing regular FastBridge data to teachers to allow for continued reteaching and targeted intervention. Teachers have too much on their plates to be always running that data on their own, so I think having a system in place where that's part of what happens during staff meeting time would be really another leverage item. And with that, I'm going to stop sharing and turn the screen over to Principal McNally and sit back and enjoy his presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Principal Rowan. Let me just queue up the exact same presentation, and then we can go from there. Great. All right, thank you, everybody, and welcome to the, the site plan for Albany High School. I want to give a little bit of context before I really dig into some of this. Because one of the things that's part of a site plan for a high school is our process is a little different because, as Assistant Superintendent Shin mentioned, our process is also deeply tied our process is also deeply tied to the WASC process. WASC is the Western Association of Schools and Colleges, which provides our accreditation. And so we go through a whole parallel process that involves having us analyzed with us as a school, having a visiting committee come and look at our programs. And that then directly informs and ties into our site plan. Our original WASC visit three years ago, all of the goals and feedback from that WASC visit is what was incorporated into the site plan at the time. This year we had a what's called a mid-cycle visit from WASC where they came, the visiting committee came back and for two days looked at our academic programs, looked at the goals that we'd set out three years ago and evaluated our progress. And overall, the visiting committee was pretty pleased with our progress, considering that COVID and some other things have been interrupting some of this. And that feedback then to get incorporated into our site plan as well. Compared to other site plans, there is something of a little bit different structure to this one, doesn't totally line up exactly with some of the LCAP goals. Because it does align with the WASC goals as well. But I'll talk through that as we get to the different goals. So the AHS vision, so Albany High School provides an environment challenging to our students and educates them to become happy, productive and responsible citizens of a diverse society. Albany High also has a vision for equitable access to vibrant and challenging coursework. All students at Albany High School, including those from underserved populations deserve vibrant and challenging coursework at all levels and in all disciplines. Such courses encourage students to achieve at their highest potential and maximize their options for post-secondary education and employment. We must act effectively to provide the supports needed to help address some of the challenges and barriers faced by our students and communities. Part of the WASC process and then for high schools is also having what are called expected schoolwide learning results. There are four for Albany High. The first that we are complex thinkers with the skills to analyze and or solve problems in a variety of contexts. Effective communicators in a variety of formats and cultural contexts. Self-directed learners with diverse experiences and perspectives that help guide them to healthy and productive lives. And individuals academically prepared for college and other post-secondary educational opportunities. So these, what are often called ESLS, go through an iterative process as well, just like the rest of our WASC related goals. So the AHS population, it's just some things that I just do want to call out as changes. Recently, our percentage of students who are eligible for free and reduced price lunch has increased. It's up to 23.5% now. That's an increase of about seven or eight percent over the last few years. Our demographics have stayed fairly similar over the past few years. Our enrollment has actually gone up slightly over the past few years. Though of course we'll see what happens with the trends that the the middle school is showing us as well. So our first SIPSE goal is related to the area of school culture and support for student personal and academic growth, which is the area defined within WASC. This goal is to integrate the new social emotional learning goals and establish vision and expected schoolwide learning results and a coherent set of expectations for students. Provide training and implementation time to staff on how to incorporate new goals into curriculum and self-observance for students and staff. And this is actually related to LCAP goal two, which is more related to social emotional growth and whole students. Let's do it, man. So this identified need comes from the information that we have similar to the middle school that students need to feel fully connected to their school. And also need to be feel that they can be their fully authentic selves. One thing that we see often is students kind of feel a sense of disconnect with school that can correlate very much with a lack of academic achievement. And that this is also important for academic post-high school success beyond academic preparation. So the measurable outcomes that we've looked at are the student learning outcomes and changing our ESLS into schoolwide learning outcomes, which can also incorporate the social emotional and social justice competencies. Having a professional development plan for Albany High that also focuses on social emotional learning and social justice PD as well as other areas of fresh development and also increasing awareness of social emotional learning, social justice competencies. And then also looking at the data, the social emotional academic data coming from the California Healthy Kids Survey, other local indicators, the California Dashboard. That of course has, one of the things that we've seen already is the COVID pandemic has definitely increased student sense of disconnection from school. And part of what we expect to see is hopefully a decrease in students reporting that disconnect from school. An increase in social emotional learning, social justice competencies and positive behaviors. We are of course doing the California Healthy Kids Survey this year, and that will be some very interesting data. So some strategy and activities, we're doing a support goal one. Having additional professional development for certified and classified staff on these different learning goals with time to integrate into the curriculum. And then also work on refining our discipline practices and our teacher and staff evaluation process. Revise our expected schoolwide learning goals and a student learning outcomes. So better define what we want to see students able to do. Communicate these standards with students and the community. Implement continuous review to ensure learning goals are being implemented on an ongoing basis. And then have an ongoing set of social emotional academic data, including post-graduation trends and longitudinal studies across different grade bands. And then commit the time to actually interpret that data as well. So really stood, look at our student outcomes more than just academics. Our goal area two, this is in the area of standards based, standards based student learning curriculum. So specifically have a five-year vision for classes and pathways that we want to offer. Reconfigure the school's course offerings over several years to meet goals for long-range planning and strengthen existing offerings. And there is a need for ongoing recurring collaboration between district leadership and departments to reassess long-term goals and vision. This is related to LCAP goal one, providing comprehensive educational experience, expanded opportunities for engagement, assessment, academic growth. So that all students can achieve with their fullest potential. So this comes from the the need to align our course offerings with the interest of students while also ensuring that all students graduate career in college ready. In the past, we've had situations of not being mindful long-term of how our course offerings align with what the needs of students can be. So the measurable outcomes, especially with career tech pathways. Right now we have multiple singleton. Those are courses that we only offer one section of, and we currently have two CTE pathways of photography and culinary arts. Our outcome is to create a strategic plan to more holistically think about career technical education. In the area of the career college readiness indicator, 64% of our students are considered prepared from the 2018, 2019 data, which is the most recent data. We would like to see an increase in the percentage of students who are prepared for post-secondary opportunities. Specifically in the area of UCA through G preparation. So those students who've met the required courses to attend a UC school. 67% of our students currently meet those minimum requirements based on the class of 2020. Would like to see an increase in that percentage in students meeting UC requirements. So some areas to have feedback on this. These goals have been somewhat more complicated because of issues around teacher turnover. So we've had significant amounts of teacher turnover in the past few years. And then also planning around the need to implement ethnic studies has also changed some of our long-term strategic planning because we need to figure out where that course fits into our long-term plans or four-year plans for students. Most of the expenditures here did occur as we planned. Our ROP programs were fully funded. And that we have been doing a lot more funding of tutoring and shared planning time for cross-curricular activities. This goal doesn't remain mostly unchanged. One thing that was highlighted was that the WASC committee did feel that over the past three years, we have had a much clearer vision around CTE. And then also more interventions and humanities nine program, which we do as well. So some additional strategies and to support goal two, having that long-term vision for the courses we want to offer students. Improve the freshman humanities benchmark learning experience to continue focus on developing humanities nine program as a cross-curricular program. Increase the number of intervention courses that we offer across grade levels. And then of course have that sustained vision for career technical education. So goal three is in the area of standards based student learning around instruction. This goal is to increase school interventions such as tutoring, supporting all students in support, ultimately students academic growth. In particular, we really want to focus on students who are not achieving compared to their peers. For example, those who chronically receive Ds and Fs in academic classes required for graduation and or for your college eligibility. So the students we talked a lot about about six weeks ago, when the board really looked at DNF grades. This is related to LCAP goal one, similar to the previous SIPSE goal. So the baselines for this one, at the high school, we focus a lot on our DNF lists. So our students who have Ds or Fs. Currently 30% of students receiving Ds or F grades in courses needed for graduation. We want to see that number come down with fewer students receiving that. In the SBACK scores, approximately 20% of our students are not meeting standards in English and Word Arts and 20% are not meeting standards in math. We want to see that percentage come down as well. And then within the California School Dashboard, which provides data, our underserved students are performing lower than others in the ELA and math CAFES scores. We want to see a decrease in the size of the absolute difference in these matrix between the underserved students and other populations. So AHS has continued to provide tutoring opportunities for students as much as possible under the budget. What continues to be a struggle with that is providing, is having teachers available to provide that tutoring. So for the upcoming school year, we're also implementing some additional academic support programs through that UCA through G grant that was recently approved. And the intervention staff continues to work to support and coordinate interventions across different groups. We were able to do most of this this year. I was hoping to do a lot more around culture responsive practices and universal design for learning. However, those are shifting to become district-wide goals as well. So we anticipate having more of that in the future. And this has been an ongoing focus for us is the focus on intervention. And we're actually expanding that with the additional grants and then maintaining the programs that we do have. See. So the specific activities is providing faculty with hourly pay to provide onsite tutoring in math, science and world languages. Continuing focus on interventions kind of tier one through three. This year our main focus was around tier one as a school. And then we have tier two and tier three happening with counselors and investigate ways to connect more students with more interventions. Doing more universal design for learning, developing better school-wide system to contact parents and guardians of struggling students. And then provide more training around culture responsive practices for faculty. So SIPSE goal four is the standards-based student learning around instruction. So our goal here is to centralize the data evaluation process to identify students struggling with DNF grades. Share that targeted data with teachers and then have staff and administration collaborate to develop a plan for intervention to increase graduation rates and college readiness. This one does again, connect back to LCAP goal one. The need is that we, while we have, we don't have very consistent systems around students with Ds and Fs and how to connect those students with the interventions. Especially in a high school like ours, you get these very siloed teaching setups where teachers teach in one area and it's hard to connect interventions across multiple areas. And we want to work to intervene earlier to identify students needing support. Currently from the SBACK graduation rates and college career readiness indicator, 69.1% of AHS students are meeting the college and career readiness standard. We want to see that one come up. We don't currently, we want to keep track of our total enrollment in CTE courses and community college courses. And we don't currently actually maintain that data. So one thing that we want to do moving forward is start to maintain that data. So we can see what our students are actually accessing outside of AHS. And then we have had intervention counselors at Albany High who work to coordinate the students who have DNF grades. And then this was, this has been really important around the pandemic especially, but these counselors have really been focusing on the increased number of students who were deeply affected by the pandemic. One of the things that we saw come out of COVID was the numbers of students with multiple Ds and Fs has gone up. We're still trying to develop systems to very quickly disseminate this data to teachers. And this goal will mostly be impacted going forward by the A through G and readiness grant from the state. And then those programs, and if those programs are effective, finding ways to sustain those programs going forward. So we do want to have a centralized system for identifying students in need of intervention. Like I said, we have the counselors who are looking at Ds and Fs, but we still need to work to really centralize how to focus on those individual students. The intervention counselors don't have enough time to look schoolwide. So they tend to focus their interventions on younger students and earlier grades to have earlier intervention. Developing systems to work with staff to very consistently share data with teachers. And then also have professional development around specific intervention strategies for students with academic needs. So one of the things that we did do this year was give teachers staff time to specifically work on interventions, tier one interventions with students who are struggling. Moving forward, we want to work to actually start having schoolwide expected interventions that occur for struggling students. So the last one, goal five, this is in the area of organization, vision and purpose, governance, leadership, staff and resources. Our focus in this area is specifically communication and communication from the district office to admin and from admin to faculty. Faculty to ask like to see clear communication about how the new behavior matrix is implemented and clear and consistent communication around deficit reduction strategies. And then cleanliness was also an issue as well. So this is also one that was adapted from our WASC report three years ago. And this is specifically related to LCAP goal three. So this goal comes from a real need to have a stronger cohesion and communication. And this was especially relevant around the pandemic and then our coming out of the pandemic. And this was also actually cited as an area where we've had significant growth by the WASC visiting committee over the last three years. Was developing more consistent communication. It's one of the reasons why there's actually fewer activities in this area. Is that compared to three years ago, we have improved in quite a few of these areas. And so what's left is the remaining areas for growth. So like I said, we have been successful in implementing many of these goals, which the WASC report did remark on. Especially in areas related to emergency preparedness. This was also made more complicated by the return to in-person schooling this year. And then the administration making clear expectations and communicating clearly with students and staff. So like I said, we did remove the items related to emergency preparedness. Our first fire drill of the year was observed by the fire marshal who was actually very happy with us. So this area used to include a lot around emergency preparedness, which has subsequently been removed as we've gotten better in those areas. So the specific goals and activities, improving the communication from the administration teams facility about the use of the restorative justice behavior matrix. So we've been working to implement protocols to communicate better with teachers when they're involved in discipline situations. Working to improve the communication from the district office to site staff by regular communication back and forth, working also make sure that we have a clean school environment. And then clear policies and procedures that are communicated well to all staff. So making sure that all staff are aware of what our policies and procedures are. So, so our specific next steps are to engage in schoolwide efforts to really revisit and revise a school's vision and mission. The vision and mission that are here as well as the ESLS have not been updated too much recently. So really reanchoring us back to a unified school vision is going to be really important moving forward. Utilizing a lot of the additional resources to focus on our career college readiness indicator rates, as well as our UCA through G rates. More than just, just having an overall increase in academic performance, so increasing across all groups. We also are moving forward with implementing and sustaining some additional social emotional learning programs, looking adopting programs such as safe school ambassadors to really try to respond to the social emotional needs of students as well. And then really work to develop whole child interventions. What has happened usually previously around interventions is they're very academically focused. So they would be focused on one specific subject matter area. We want to work towards developing interventions that are focused on the whole child. So really focusing on those students who are not doing well across multiple areas. And then focusing to intervene there. Okay, so next is the McGregor High School. So McGregor, of course, is our continuation school. There's not as much data in here about the specific demographics within McGregor because McGriffic McGregor does have a smaller population with about 27 students. One thing that has happened is McGregor's population has increased somewhat with students needing multiple classes as a result of the pandemic. I haven't broken it down much by different demographic groups because the McGregor population is so small. I haven't broken it down much by different demographic groups because the McGregor population is so small. So the mission of McGregor High School is, oh, and just one more comment about McGregor. McGregor will be going through its full WASC accreditation next year. And so part of what will happen next year is the updating of McGregor's SIPSE based on that WASC feedback as well. So the McGregor mission is to promote student success through direct intervention in a smaller school environment. To deliver education, social and career development services, students based on state district and school site goals. And to create a positive climate with an emphasis on enhancing academic achievement, self-esteem, physical well-being, interpersonal skills and personal goal setting. So McGregor SIPSA goal one. Is to refine academic construction techniques, be more personalized and student centered, build academic confidence and reinforce skills applicable to post-secondary opportunities. This is tied to LCAP goal one. The identified need here is that McGregor students have not been successful in the traditional academic environments, which is why they are in McGregor. And that we then have to build a program better to suit their needs. McGregor does offer much smaller class sizes. And we want to utilize that as much as possible to personalize things to the needs of students. So we want to, of course, first focus on increasing the graduation numbers. So from the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Which was used as the baseline because of the changes in graduation requirements and pass no pass policies, but eighty five percent. Graduation rate, want to see that increase to ninety percent or more. Another area is the frequency and effectiveness of staff collaboration. So we're currently utilizing some crossover meetings and then we want to end some irregular lunch meetings. We want to increase more regularly scheduled meetings with the McGregor staff. And we want to develop a consensus on best practices for student centered online credit recovery, which is one method that we're using to. Help students be successful. Our current model was adapted in January of two thousand nineteen. And we've worked to implement across multiple subject matter areas. We want to work to have better uniform policies and procedures for all courses and content areas to better serve students. One of the things that's happened returning from the pandemic is the number of students with significant credit deficits has increased. So that's presented a real challenge for McGregor. Was all as well as Albany High School. The challenges are mostly in implementation, but we have left many of these goals intact. So our teachers do continue to work on how to make it more personalized. The McGregor staffing has actually stayed very consistent over the past few years, which has really helped as well. We have had an addition of a new teacher and new mental health supports. That has worked to upgrade this and we've also worked to upgrade. And improve some of our McGregor grading guidelines to better suit the needs of our students. Goal two is create a stronger culture and sense of community and support in McGregor in order to increase student engagement. As well as meet as many students' social emotional needs as possible. This is related to LCAP goal two. This comes from the fact that McGregor students often feel disconnected from the school community, usually the AHS school community. Which is part of why they come to McGregor. In order to foster success for these students, we want to create a more caring environment where they feel seen and understood as a way to help them grow academically. So. Some indicators of this chronic absenteeism in the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year that was around fifty eight point eight percent. Want to see a reduction below fifty percent. Out of school suspension levels in eighteen nineteen, that was seven percent to students out of the thirty two students ever enrolled at McGregor. Let's that come down as well, below five percent if possible. So some just analysis, the return in person lighting. Has made it possible to incorporate more social emotional learning activities into the program. So we have worked to have little celebrations every grading period and those kinds of things. And but a significant challenge for the program is that pretty much all students who started McGregor this year were new to McGregor. And one thing that we saw was that especially during the pandemic, students who couldn't kind of join them Gregor community were often much less successful. That has made this year really focused on reestablishing systems and recreating community. And that this goal does remain a significant one for all underserved students. So our goal three, working with our faculty, build a more team centered approach to all students. By increasing student centered collaboration among staff and create more methods to engage parents. And this is related to LCAP goal three. So this comes from the fact that McGregor has a small school environment. And we need to leverage that with our faculty as much as we do with our students to really kind of try to build a team around each student, meet their needs. Family engagement has been somewhat easier this year. Due to the return to in-person learning, however, it does, does continue to be an ongoing challenge with continuing to engage parents. We have been working on systems to better connect with families. And this has been made more complicated by my role kind of being both schools, whereas before I was an assistant principal for Albany High School. And many of these goals, of course, are relevant to both programs. And then creating that better family engagement will definitely be an ongoing role for McGregor. So the specific strategies or activities, increasing family participation at school events. And then also ident which has also been more, more difficult because with the pandemic, we haven't done things like in-person back to school night in three years. And then also identify and implement direct communication systems other than the traditional email and mail to increase family and student engagement. So one thing we've been doing is exploring more ways to reach out to families as a way to get them more engaged and involved. And then I believe that actually, oh, sorry, our next steps. With this return to in-person learning, we have continued to implement a lot more gatherings and celebrations to build community between students and students and faculty. We're adapting to the increasing number of students needing a credit recovery. So one thing that's been something of a concern is that the number of students needing that level of credit recovery has gone up. Which is causing us to really ask some questions about what our course offerings are and how we implement that and possibly change the structure of some of our programs. And then also work to better engage students' families and make them full partners in student's education. And that actually concludes the Albany High and McGregor SIPSES.
President Hinkley, we turn it back over to you for my Q and A with the board.
Great, so we have thirty minutes. Lots of questions, I'm sure.
And or comments, right?
Or comments, yeah. I can start with a couple of questions. Just thanks for putting all this together. I know these are all. A lot of work and there's a lot, a lot going on at our sites. I, you know, one of the things that's always weird about these plans is that everything is phrased as we will do this. And so it's a little hard as a reader to know which pieces are new and which pieces are continuations of what we're already doing. So I'd like to just start by asking, you know, what are the. Well, maybe this is two pieces. What are the things that we've been doing that you don't know if they're working? Well, right? Because there are some of these things we've been doing for a while and I know one of the. Things we're supposed to be doing is assessing whether they're effective. So are there some of these things we've been trying for a while that you think are? Not working as well as we would like. And then what are the, what are the sort of brand new things? Because I keep hearing different things about, we're gonna have. You know, a new position to, to support. You know, math in the high school or a new position and I, I'm hearing a bit of a disconnect because I don't know. Which pieces of that are actually happening or maybe coming to us later as part of the budget. And so. If maybe each of you could just take a few minutes to really highlight what are the new? Things that are happening because of the gaps in effectiveness in what we're doing already. So that we have a better understanding of, of what's changing, I guess. Maybe starting with the middle school.
There's my unmute. Thank you for the question, President Hinkley. Yeah, I mean, I think a couple of different pieces. You know, one thing just in terms of measuring effectiveness. Is that is just sort of this strange couple of years we've had of, and especially when we're looking at like school climate and social emotional well-being. And then we look at shifting of needs. And so like our students coming back in this year. There seemed like there's a much, much greater need in terms of like addressing. Community connectedness and, and you know, addressing anxiety and all of these different pieces. And so. Some of the pieces that are here are not like. Brand new as a concept, but are specifically applied. So we have run groups in the past. But we ran a number of different groups this, this year specifically related to connecting students who were disconnected. We started, you know, counselors having lunch in the garden as one of the groups we had. And they, you know, groups to support students related to anxiety. Those pieces were. New the Cobra tutoring, obviously we put in place, you all have heard about that enough, I think, you know, last year, and then we weren't able to get it off the ground this year. So. Adding it, working with the PTA to add additional resources to make it a more viable position for next year. I'm just looking at the plan to just to call out, you know, so the UDL MTSS pieces are both pieces that. There already are layers of support. We did work this year to kind of call out and really understand better what we have in place in each of those areas. And where we see is the gaps and next year would be kind of the. More specifically, and I think that's a huge leverage item in terms of the work that their district's going to be doing because not only. Are we going to be filling in where we don't have pieces that are really effectively addressing particular groups? But also because it'll be a, you know, K twelve initiative. There's going to be, I, I just think that the impact is going to be much greater. We, I think the, one of the new pieces is that we have had the fast bridge data. We have struggled a lot this year to be able to. Run the data and have it in ways that are digestible to teachers. We've gone through a number of trainings. We've brought people in. You know, assistant superintendent Shin has supported us with this work. And you know, we are, one of the new pieces in here is actually having that, those, the data. Broken down by class for teachers on a regular basis so that it's really intentionally formatively used as data. And then the wanting to add in an SEL indicator is new for next year. We've only ever had the healthy kid survey. Other than informally, you know, assessing those pieces. So that's something, that's another. Big new piece that we want to add in. I, off the top of my head, those are kind of the big new leverage items that I would call out. And then the PRJ, we had started this year and that's going to be expanded next year.
And can I just ask as a follow-up, yes, we have heard a lot about the tutoring. And I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand, you know, what. If we're sort of relying on the PTA to fund something that we really felt the loss of this year, can you maybe speak a little bit to? You know, is there a need for the district to provide more support for something like that rather than? Hope that the PTA pays us enough to get that up and running because it seems like a really big. You know, it's come up a lot, so.
I think it's a good question. I think there's, I would answer it two ways. One is that. It's, it's not just hoping, I mean, we, I work with the PTA and budgeted for next year so that there will be an increase in that position. You know, I think this is kind of the nature of schools and I appreciate the piece around like the district providing essential pieces. And also we do depend on. School care and we depend on PTA, you know, all of those. What I'm hoping that, that will be able to be leveraged out of the site budgets and district support. Is that, is that we're looking at whether we can have targeted tutoring pushed into our Cobra study program within this school day. With using some of our teachers. And I think that's where we could really leverage some district money and, and address some of this, some similar concerns, but catching those kids who are here during the day who. Are in achievement opportunity gap populations who we have already in this period, I'm getting support and really giving them targeted support. Directly related to fast bridge data and formative assessments in classes.
Great, thank you. Yeah, the push-in piece, I think it might also be helpful because that's come up at the high school too, trying to think about how to offer more of that. So. So could I ask the same question for the high school? Just what, what are the sort of highlights of what you think we need to be doing? What, what are the new pieces? And. I think especially in response to the conversations that we've had about math and about. The need to better connect students with the intervention services that we're offering or, or increasing those and then connecting them.
Yeah, I mean, what I can say to that is that we're, we're looking at a couple of things in the high school. The one. That I hit on, I think was in the through line and some, a couple of different things I said is. For a long time, our interventions, the high school have been very subject matter focused. And been very focused on, okay, so this student's not doing well in English. Let's put them in some kind of English intervention. While not also simultaneously looking at, is that student having struggles in other subject matter areas? Is that student also having attendance challenges? Is that student supposed to be served through a 504 or an IEP? How is that case manager involved in some of those intervention processes as well? So we've had this extremely siloed approach to intervention. And one of the things that we're working on going forward is trying to move away from a subject matter silo. To more of a students needing support. So this is where questions of, you know, not just is a student doing poorly in math, but is a student doing poorly in math and English? If the answer is yes, a math specific intervention is not that likely to actually be effective. Because that tells us some other issue is possibly also at play. Another, so that's what ones we're doing going forward is trying to move away from subject matter specific interventions. Towards more holistic interventions. So we also have things like our students, student services team. That looks at these kinds of things. We're try, our intervention counselors are incorporating attendance data into the things that they do. Some of what we're using, the A through G block grants around. And some of that didn't find its way into the SIPSE just because of timing, really is, is what that was about. But all of that is going towards identifying students needing support or students in target populations that we know we underserve. And then working to develop interventions to support those students. Which would then also free up our subject matter specific interventions for students who really need that subject matter specific intervention. So for example, focusing the math intervention courses around students who seem to struggle very specifically in math. You asked about effectiveness. I mean, I would like to say that every single intervention that we do is effective. And if I knew an intervention was not effective, I would stop doing it. But one of the things we do know education is almost every intervention is effective. It's a question of what is more effective than something else. So that's what we're working on right now is how do we more effectively figure out? You know, math intervention course is a good one, that the students who are in there, that their struggle in math classes related specifically to some kind of gap in math preparation. As opposed to something else that could be better served through another service. Tutoring is another good example as well. Tutoring has been very effective in specific situations where students can actually access the tutoring. So one of the things that we're working on expanding is how do we have within the school day tutoring supports? So either our homework lab type programs or something like that. Which again comes back to the question of how are those programs supporting the whole student? With our intervention counselors, how do we make sure that our intervention counselors are looking at first? At useful data and then actually having responses that make the most of their time, considering that they have fairly limited. Time in their schedule for the two of them together, it's point four. And how can they actually coordinate interventions with other counselors? Coming back also to a question we're having, which is for the individual classroom teacher. If a student has a D or F in your class, what do you do about that? So that's one thing that we're working on as well as how are we developing those interventions? That also required even conversations in the past two years about, okay, how frequently is everyone updating their grade books? So that's one of the things that we do now is a way of trying to systematize our interventions. And you know, some conversations with Dr. Wells and this kind of, kind of comes back to with some of the things in the SIPSE, there's kind of this chicken and the egg problem. I don't want to devote resources that I don't have to something. So recently conversations about math support or additional kind of student success support at the high school. To provide positions to facilitate some of this has definitely been something that we're talking about. But big picture that I, that's what I would say we're working on at the high school is moving towards intervention that is focused on kind of specific academic areas to more whole child.
Great, thank you, Vice President Duran.
I have three questions and I'll be really quick. And the first one really is for, I, I really think. Ms. Brill, in the sense that you really focus on data and I'm super appreciative of that. I think that is so key. But I wonder when you had in the presentation, the next year seems to be based. On much of the data from Fast Bridge this year, T one. And I'm wondering what happened with T three of last year? And, and you're making a. And, and you're making a connect between how kids were in T1. A T3, and if there was a difference when you did T1? And then did you go and look at T1 versus T2? So that the kids are definitely in a different place than they were in T1. And then T3 at the end of the year, what do you do with that?
It's a lot of Ts. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate the question, understand and the intent. I think. A couple of pieces, we, I started off when I was looking at this comparing the data from. The end of the year last year to this year, and. It was so drastically different. That it made me pause and think about the, the way that the data was collected last year, how we had. You know, at the end of the year, we're collecting, we have a number of kids taking it at home and some kids took, it was just sort of all over the place, but a lot of the data that was collected was from students taking it while they were at home. And I, it just felt like. The way that we see data shifting and us making impacts are going up or down. It, it doesn't tend to be in like drastic amounts and the data was so, there was such a big gap. That to me, it felt like we're comparing apples and oranges. We're comparing students sitting at home, taking. An exam versus in a classroom. And so. That was when we were looking at that as a school psych council, we decided to use this year as kind of more of the. Baseline data. It still was allowed us to look at who was. Not performing at grade level to provide targeted interventions to do all those pieces it needed to do for us this year. But in terms of. As a comparison point, it felt more productive to use it as a baseline comparing to for, for next year.
If I could just. Mention really quickly that it seems to me, if I recall, that last year's T2. Is basically the same kids that you're using one today in terms of. It's, it's the black and brown kids basically that are not doing well. And so if, if the data is basically saying that, then, then. You know, what are we doing specifically for those kids? And, and so my third question, the second question is for Mr. McNally, but the third question, maybe you could respond because it's for both of you is. Are you in, in a multiple ways because you do a lot of different things? Are you actively seeking out the parents of the, of the needy students, of the students who are at risk? Really spending time with them to find out from their perception. They don't have to talk about educational outcomes. Or, you know, how to get there, but in terms of, of us really understanding what potentially might be going on at home. As, as one of the keys to this.
Yeah, 100%. I actually think that's one of our strengths as a school. Our. Counseling team is, is doing a lot of outreach and reaching out regularly. And in ongoing way to families for students who are struggling and often, and there's a lot of back and forth. They come to the student services teams, talk with the parent. This is what's happening. Now this is going on. We're putting in this support. The parent's going to reach out about this piece. So there's. A great deal of communication that is happening with, with students at home. And oftentimes the kids who are really struggling. There are other layers and other pieces that are happening. It's not just, you know, this is what's happening at school. There's a much bigger picture for them. And sometimes we're able to. We have people who can connect them with outside resources. Sometimes we're able to provide more resources. I mean, we are always able to provide some more resources and layers of support. But yeah, there's a great deal of communication happening with our families of our struggling students.
Great. Maybe you could provide that information to the student achievement committee. That's one piece we're looking at for sure. And Mr. McNally, then the same question to you about those parents. And a second question I have is about. The, you know. The expected outcomes weren't to me, not very specific. It was pretty generalized and, and, and there seems that there's so much going on at the high school. I mean, I just sort of. Heard Ds and Fs not being shared with teachers, teacher turnover, improving teacher evaluations. Lack of school cleanliness. It, there was just so many things that seemed on a bad roll. And I'm wondering. And, and in terms of really focusing then on the kids that need the supports. If there's any outside thinking about. I know you talk about better systems all the time, but really thinking outside the box as to how do we focus on these kids? Because. Your. Prior presentations about McGregor were really to me, super impressive. About the connection with kids. And it just seems that your experience is there should have flowed to the high school. In a way that, that could make some, some absolutely effective changes there. And so just. I sort of want to ask you about that.
Yeah, I mean, to the, to the, your first question, I, I would just echo a lot of what Principal Brill said about things that we're working on at the high school. We try to do a lot of that connection with our student services team and then our intervention counselors as well. And our intervention counselors go through and regularly. Collect the data and share it with other counselors about. You know, who are the students seem to have trouble in multiple areas? They also look at attendance data. That then prompts outreach from the counselors to families. Administrators are part of those meetings as well. Once a week, we have. Student services meetings that are the counselors, the administrators, our school psychologists at our mental health lead. And all of those folks together meet and look at these questions of kind of what kind of, what, what's happening with different students? We have a system for teachers to refer students to the student services team. And then plan interventions that way. But part of it is outreach to families. Usually headed up by counselors when it's a student who seems to be having trouble in multiple areas. So there's kind of a, again, more of a holistic concern. And then to your second question, a lot of it comes from, I think, just a lot of the process around the SIPSE. And just the ways related to WASC. But like I've said, a lot of what I'm planning going forward and the way we're planning to do interventions going forward. Is informed a lot by my experience, my experience with McGregor and that sense of connection between students and school is often a huge part of what success is related to. So that's where I'm looking at a lot of our intervention programs. It, Albany High is also a much bigger place than McGregor, which. You know, has its strengths and his weaknesses. And, but that's definitely an area that we're working on. The, the biggest challenge has been because of COVID over the last two years. Some of these questions have not been quite as pressing as some of the. Issues related to like COVID response and those kinds of things. And unlike AMS, we didn't have some of those same structures in place that we could build on. So we've been working on them at the same time as well.
Was that your last?
Yes, thank you to both of you.
I didn't count. I think one, one thing I'm kind of struggling with is, like you said, Principal McNally, the SIPSE is kind of its own. Its own creature. But I think at some point. I'm hoping that we'll hear what these specific. Plans are, these new efforts. And I keep being told the SIPSE. This workshop is where I'm going to get that information. So. I'm, I'm trying. You know, I don't want to ask you questions that, that you're not prepared to answer, but I am really wondering what. In particular, our strategy is for addressing the concerns around math, for example. And I think I have the same. You know, I think that's not specific to the high school, right? I used to volunteer in my kids' classroom and. Kindergarten, first, second grade, you already see that math gap beginning. And so. I, if we have, you know, we have a little time, I would like to just better understand, you know. How we think we might. Address the. The specific achievement issues that the board has grappled with this year, particularly as we wait to hear. You know, about the budget. And I don't know if those conversations are still evolving and we need to wait for more information or if there's some. Specifics we can hear now about. Whether there's additional. Support the district is going to provide or additional staffing or something to help. You know, like you mentioned in a previous conversation, well, we used, a long time ago, we had a person. Whose job it was, right, to make sure that students were being connected. And I understand we're rethinking. How we do intervention, but. You know, somebody still has to do that work. And I think we don't have the staff in place to do it now. So. If. I guess my question is, when will we be able to hear more about? How we're going to invest more in those supports, given what? Has emerged in our conversations about these gaps.
Let, let me add, let me try to fill that hope because that, those are wonderful questions. And issues to grapple with. I could share and signal to the board that. First, that the. Single plan for student achievement. Does not preclude you from doing anything that's not in that, those plans. For example. You just heard the presentation from the high school. And the high school are working with their current budget. And what the district office does is listen to a number of different groups, including the high school principal. The student achievement group. And we look at data. And what's not reflected in, for example, in the high school are key positions that are arriving for the fall. That you will hear more about in the budget presentation, how we take from Peter. To give the Tammy or Paul. What's coming is that you're going to have. A high school math coach. Responsible for the ongoing professional development of the math program. Focusing primarily on. The lower math class and those students who need additional math assistance. In addition to that, in one of the previous presentation and data analysis by Principal McNally. Earlier in the year, he talked about the great need, and it is a great need at the high school. To have a parallel, will case. And so we're looking at, but he called it a pupil services support. Now we're looking at a, for example, a social worker. That would hone in and coordinate more mental health services and address these kids. Who are crying out for help. And we haven't been as responsive as we ought to be. And so that you would start to see the budget line up with our kids' needs and our data. And so when, when President Hinckley make reference of having to wait for the budget, you shouldn't have to wait for the budget. This is a wonderful place to have that conversation and start to signal to the board that in addition to what you're hearing, that's in the plan. There's additional resources and some resources going to be adjusted. To address and fill these huge holes. That the schools can't do with the current budget. And so it's a shift in practice and it's more of a data. Response like practice, meaning that if our kids' greatest needs are in this area, it should be reflected in how we adjust the budget. And so we will talk about that in more detail, I'm hoping. When we do our budget presentation, but this is an appropriate place to start to have that conversation as well, so that you guys could see that although. The plans are. As they are, it doesn't preclude us from. Still moving forward and filling some of those big gaps that they have.
Okay, so we'll be hearing more about that. June 14th or whenever the budget is coming to us.
We'll be hearing about that on June 14th or whenever the budget is coming to us.
Okay.
Yes.
Trustee Davidson.
Thank you. Those were full of information. I just had a couple of. Super quick questions. One, Principal McNally, you mentioned the like SCL. That's happening and I liked what you said, Principal Brill of needing new indicators. For our social emotional, I think that's really, really important that we look at it from multiple facets. And I was just wondering. Are we using, because I saw you put in potential like the student ambassadors program, are we using any? Set. SCL approach curriculum or anything right now? And are we training staff? In that somehow, or is it kind of on them? I'll let you answer that and then I just have two more super quick questions.
The middle school's done more of this than the high school has, so I'm going to go first. So the middle school doesn't make us look bad. We, we, there's definitely some programs that we're working on. Implementing at the high school level. That really what we're looking at is models that are kind of where. We're working with outside groups. The Safe Schools ambassadors is one that we are looking, that we're, we're. Almost really going to be adopting. The middle school's been doing for a while that then allows us to build the capacity in our own staff and sustain within our own staff. So that we're not constantly working with some of these outside groups. So what we're doing right now, and this is part of, you know, a process that we were thinking about long term. We're really trying to build some of these capacities within our own staff so that we can sustain some of these programs internally. Right now, we're looking at the high school of safe school ambassadors. We also have a few other. Programs and ideas that we're looking at for ways to more systematically address some of the social emotional needs. That we see, especially around school connectedness. Safe Schools ambassadors came from a lot of us noting. Issues this year around kind of ongoing issues around bullying and some of those things and wanting to really have more systematic responses to it. And responding to some of those patterns that we've seen as well. So just to more specifically answer your question, what I would say is what's generally happened is the sites have generally, have usually come up with some of those responses themselves. But we have been seeing a lot of cohesion in secondary. Because honestly, the high school has been pretty impressed with some of the things that have been done at the middle school.
Shall I piggyback? Thank you, Principal McNally. Yeah, so I think, you know, safe school ambassadors, we started off with having them come in, community matters is the organization running, running trains for us and putting that program in place until it was part of our school culture. And we went through our train the trainers model. So we now are, are, have all the staff training and the equipment to run the training ourselves. We also developed lessons to push. Some of the skills out into our advisory program. So it's not just one group of students who's getting those skills. We have one group of students who's part of the program and running the program. But we also pushing skills out to all of our students. I would say that's the only like kind of canned program that we have. Our advisory program brings in threads though from lots of other organizations and have built lessons from other organizational resources to really. Try to get at the social emotional learning. Community building, anti bullying, anti racist pieces that we want to be pushing into our school. The peer sort of justice program also pulls from a lot of. Programs that are in place around PRJ, but we pulled from those resources and took the best of it all and created it to be our own. You know, and I think someone like affinity groups are, there's lots of research on benefits of affinity groups and workplaces. I haven't seen as much on schools, but it's the same idea of. You know, connectedness and community. And that's something that are, we, you know, at. Anecdotally, you know, subjectively, we've kind of gotten some like. Quick survey data from our students to, in terms of effectiveness. So we have a number of kind of different pieces happening, but. Safe School Ambassador Service is the only one that's more of like a program, program that we've adopted.
Is your advisory at the middle school, is it, everyone's operating under like one? Curriculum for the advisory period or is it individualized by teacher?
No, it's more, it's, it's varied by grade level, but we have our safe and inclusive schools coordinator is in, is in charge of pushing the lessons out to teachers and then the teachers. Implement the lessons as they are. And then on the days that the peer or sort of justice leaders push in, the teachers host that. Yeah. And then the other piece that I would just add is that a while back, our district had adopted positive behavioral intervention support PBIS K8. And, and there is a lot of training that was done, a lot of pieces that were put in place that are still in place, K8, you know, every, you know, kind of. The way in the beginning of the year, we teach students, you know, about, you know, we take time to set, to set students up for success around behaviors, academic behaviors as well as, as schoolwide behaviors. What does it mean to be safer, responsible and an ally at our school? There's Cobra Catches in place, Cobra of the Month, you know, so we have a lot of those types of pieces that are part of that research based program as well.
Okay, I don't want to run us over, so I'm just going to throw these out and we can answer them later in an email is fine. But. One thing that really stood out to me, and this is going to be brought up later in our meeting as well, but. The classroom cleanliness, that's really concerning. We've got to set a stage for our kids to learn. And so I think as a district, that's something I've noticed. We need to take seriously is our base level maintenance. We have to set. The tone for these teachers to do their professional job and for our students to come in and respect the environment. And then they'll, you know. See that and feel that. I'm super. You know, I saw a teacher's classroom at Cornell and it's just like mind blowing how beautiful and charming it is and the response that kids and families have to it. And I think that if we can at least the classrooms clean. The second is the. Teacher turnover at the high school. I know we've been talking a lot about that. And Dr. Wells and I had a little quick conversation about some of that today, but I'm really hoping that we can support. Less of that. So if you have any ideas or strategies of how the board can be helpful. On that front, just having teachers for a little bit longer really helps build that team. So I appreciate that you kind of pointed that out.
Yeah, I mean, turnover is, is one of those things that, especially for a lot of the goals that we have. I mean, I. I'll say that my philosophy tends to be, you know, it's better to go slower, further together. And that, that does depend, of course, on some consistency in staffing and also like less disruptions around things like the pandemic and those kinds of things. I mean, I have been principal of this school for a little over two years. But that's been two years of COVID. When we've been focusing on kind of an ongoing. When we've been focusing on kind of an ongoing emergency situation and. We're really excited to look forward to actually doing a lot more. But that, the disruption of the last two years has definitely felt when we think about planning, moving forward. And, you know, there's a lot of things that I was hoping to do this year. It just wasn't able to do because so much of what we've been doing is focusing on pandemic response.
I just, I know we're almost over time or we are over time and we should give ourselves a break before our five hour meeting that's coming. But I just wanted to throw out a, a comment. From sitting on a, a lot of different committees at the high school and student committees and the CTE committee and. There are a lot of different threads of the conversation about what our curriculum and course offerings look like at the high school. There's ethnic studies, there's how do we get more kids taking a language so that we increase A through G take up? There's how do we expand our CTE pathways? There's what do the students want to take that we're not offering? How do we get? More students into the classes that they're not able to get into. And then there's. The conversation at the budget committee about, you know, what are the? What happens if we do continue to see enrollment decline at the high school? So I just wanted to make a pitch for. Somehow that all those different pieces need to be integrated because otherwise what I see happening is. Problems are being solved, you know, one tenth of the problem at a time. And that seems like an effort to put. Something to put some effort into next year. And, you know, I may be telling you something you've been thinking about for years already, but I think that is something. That needs to be, have some kind of strategic focus, you know, pretty soon. To ensure that we're not making little decisions here and there that undermine other goals that relate to what kinds of classes we're offering. And that just leads to one last little piece that. That I know we're putting some effort into helping students who are enrolled in A through G and are struggling to get Cs in those classes, but I'm still hoping to hear. A strat, what our strategy is for understanding how to get more students to be enrolling. In the classes that they need to meet those A through G requirements and. And whether we want to think about. Uh, how our graduation requirements align with that. And obviously this all feeds back into the comment I just made about, you know. This means understanding what the impact would be on our curriculum and our budget. But, you know, it strikes me that we are a high school that requires only two years of math. And that we're out of line with a lot of other high schools, especially. High schools with the same kind of. Achievement that we have. And so I think those are all conversations that are happening in little places and I'd love to see them kind of pulled, pulled together. So that was just a long-winded comment. I'm just going to throw in your lap. Are there any other? Comments or questions before we?
I have a comment. And a question. My comment is that I definitely think. A deeper dive into a lot of the comments that you've made, President Hinckley, and that were made by Vice President Duran. So I'm hoping that we will get some follow-up there. The only question that I have. Well, two questions. One, is it possible for? This to either be. Extended or revisited at a different time? I hate to kind of rush through something so important. Because we scheduled it on a time where we have another meeting coming up. Cause I feel like. This is why we're all here. So we shouldn't rush through such an important. Topic, but I feel kind of inclined to rush because then it'll like kind of throw everything else, you know, off. So. I'm wondering if that's a possibility and if we could kind of just look at the. Scheduling moving forward so that we don't do that next time. And then my other question is. Is it possible to have more detailed? Of a timeline of when things will actually be implemented? Because. It sounds like we have a lot of great ideas, but I don't know when any of that stuff is actually going to kind of fall into place. It sounds like. For lack of a better example, it sounds like we have a really cool honeydew list. But as many of you probably know, honeydew lists sound great, but they don't actually. Get accomplished within the timeline that the partner set. Right? So, but because there's no date, it's like, here's the list and it's, it's like a whole bunch of great stuff I'm going to do, but. It doesn't actually say like when it's actually going to get done, which means that the. Gratification for all of the. Great things is stalled because we don't know when it's actually going to happen. So I wonder if there's a timeline. Around those things or if there's not, how we can implement one moving forward.
President Hinckley, can I grapple with that for a moment?
Yeah.
Trustee Dos, thank you for those questions and I really appreciate it because it's an opportunity to give clarification. We've been thinking about this. I'm, I'm simply considering bringing back an abbreviated version. In August or September of our school plan so that parents and staff and everybody get to know what we're rolling out. Right at the start of school, I think that would really be neat. As for the timeline. The timeline, the expectation. Is that we will start practicing and or implementing. This coming fall immediately for everything we presented tonight. So it's not like a wishlist. This is a implementation and practice I'm going into play for the fall 2022, 23 school year.
I also just wanted to, to say for your, to your first question, you know, all of these conversations about. Student achievement, what's happening at our schools, what we're budgeting, what we're planning for next year will also be part of. Our LCAP, which we have two sessions on in the next month, our budget discussion, which we have three sessions on. Over the next month, as well as a long presentation from the student achievement committee with their recommendations. So. We will not, we, we will not be losing the thread of this conversation. But this is when we do the site plans, which we do formally have to vote on as a board, not tonight, but when they come back to us. In the future. And so our next version of this is the elementary. Plans, which will come to us May 24th. I encourage folks to really read through all the materials. These are 80-page plans, but they're worth. Reading for all the data so that you have those questions in mind when we. Come back to discussing how this materializes in the budget and the LCAP plans. And aligns with the recommendations of the student achievement committee. So thank you again, Principal McNally, Principal Brill and. And Assistant Superintendent Shin and Superintendent Wells and everyone that works on all these. And we will, these will come back to us. I don't remember the date, but they'll come back to us for approval. And we are going to adjourn this work-study session and then come back. I guess just the board and superintendent come back at six. So please look at your emails so you know how to log into that meeting. And then our regular board meeting will resume at seven o'clock tonight. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.